This roll call, please.
Mayor Young.
Here.
Commissioner Patrick.
Here.
Commissioner Lewis.
Here.
Commissioner Leachman.
Here.
And Commissioner Wilkerson.
Present.
Inside for invocation, we have Pastor Wade Draper. I thought that's who you were back there for.
I'm now in the back.
Come on in.
David could call this out because it's over desk.
Well, Tabitha gave me a note and I saw it, then I lost the note. I'm like, wait a minute.
Oh, okay. We're good. All right. So I just got back from Africa, so I don't know what to pray for except for always pray for you. Is that a good note?
Yeah.
All right. Love you, Jesus. Thank you, Lord, for being here in a room with us. We thank you for loving us purely and unconditionally and eternally. And, Lord, that we could share that message of love with our middle hires and high schoolers and the T-shirts and the bands and just encourage them to know that they're loved and to love others. Lord, thank you for the council tonight and trust them to you, Lord, for wisdom, discernment, truth and accuracy in all that they say and do, Lord, to please you and do the things that are best for our community. God, we pray just your special anointing and covering. And, God, we thank you for all the graces you've given us and all the blessings we get to enjoy. So thank you for this night. We pray, Lord, for your blessing and your leading by your Spirit as we share the service tonight and you get the greatest amount of glory possible from this meeting. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thanks.
Lord bless.
And so tonight, for a pledge of allegiance and then maybe a song afterwards, we have the USD 490 Encore Group. So do you want to introduce themselves first?
Um, I'm going to do that after.
You know what? I'll let you be in charge. That's good.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, guys, for having us here tonight. I'm Katie Banks Todd, and we're El Dorado High School Encore, and we're getting ready to go to Disneyland on Saturday.
Oh, that's awesome.
Yes, and we are performing there on next Tuesday. So we have a 20-minute show. We perform in California Adventure on the big stage there, which is pretty cool for these kids, and we're going to sing "I See the Light" from Rapunzel for you guys tonight. So.
All those days watching from the windows, all those years outside looking in, all that time never even knowing just how blind I've been. Now I'm here blinking in starlight. Now I'm here, suddenly I see standing here, it's all so clear, I'm where I'm meant to be. And at last I see the light, and it's like the fog has lifted. And at last I see the light, and it's like the sky is new. And it's warm and real and bright, and the world has somehow shifted. All at once, everything is different now that I see you. All those days chasing down the danger, all those years living in a blur, all that time never to be seeing things the way they were. Now she's here shining in the starlight. Now she's here, suddenly I know if she's here, it's crystal clear, I'm where I'm meant to go. And at last I see the light, and it's like the fog has lifted. And at last I see the light, and it's like the sky is new. And it's warm and real and bright, and the world has somehow shifted. All at once, everything is different now that I see you. Now that I see you.
Very good. I hope you all have a really safe trip and enjoy the opportunity.
Thank you.
Katie, excuse me a second. What time Tuesday are they going to sing?
Um, I don't know yet.
Okay.
Disney has not told us yet.
Okay, my daughter's going to be down, so I was going to tell her she would.
Oh, so I will let you know.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah.
Thank you, Katie.
See you, guys.
Thank you. See you. That sounded great. All right, next item on the agenda, we do have a proclamation tonight. Whereas severe weather and tornado season in Kansas has always been known as a potentially dangerous time, historically producing property damage, injuries, injuries and even loss of life. And whereas during the 2022 storm season, the National Weather Service logged over 1,000 warnings for severe storms, including the storm that produced the destructive EF3 tornado that struck the city of Andover, Kansas and the surrounding rural areas. And whereas everyone is potentially at risk during severe weather and tornado season, which reaches its peak in Kansas between March and June. And whereas the National Weather Service, in conjunction with the state of Kansas and local jurisdictions, will be conducting a statewide tornado drill on March 7th at 10:00 a.m. And whereas the purpose of severe weather preparedness week is to heighten the public's understanding of the dangers associated with the severe weather and tornadoes, now therefore be resolved that I, Mayor Bill Young, proclaim the week of March 6th through March 10th, 2023, in the city of El Dorado as severe weather preparedness week. A witness thereof, I, Mayor Bill Young, have hereunto set my hand and cause the official seal of the city of El Dorado, Kansas, to be affixed on this sixth day of March, 2023. So tornado drills tomorrow, if you won't pay attention, the sirens will go off the day better. So we'll go from there. Next on the agenda, we have personal appearances. Personal appearances are opportunities for organizations or citizens to make special presentations before the city commission. Such appearances are scheduled in advance of the meeting by calling City Clerk Tabitha Sharp at 316-321-9100 by 5:00 p.m. the Tuesday preceding the meeting. Presentations are limited to 10 minutes, and any presentation is for information purposes only, no action will be taken. And tonight on the agenda for personal appearance, we have El Dorado Main Street Master Plan being presented by Emily Canal. Come on up.
Thank you. So all I have to do is click it and it'll turn. This one?
It doesn't really work. I can't reach.
Okay. I can't click the first button, guys. Okay, so I am Emily Canal. I am Director of El Dorado Main Street, and thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to represent Main Street and to talk about a subject that you are very well aware of, but not everybody is. So we wanted to take this opportunity to explain where we are with this project, what it is quickly, and what we hope the next step is. So thank you. So this is the El Dorado Main Street Master Plan Project. It was adopted as a goal of El Dorado Main Street late in the fall of 2020. So it's been a work in progress for some time, but it is meant to be a dynamic document. It is not something set in stone. It is something that is living, that is capable of absorbing lots of input, changes, feedback as we move forward to improve the downtown. The title of the project is El Dorado Good to Great, with the idea that we want to recognize all of the work that has gone before us to create the good downtown that we have and the what has been envisioned by current stakeholders for what could be the future, to take our good downtown to a great downtown. So. Let's see. So our mission with Main Street, again, to review for many people, is to enhance our downtown identity and heritage, to foster a center of activity for both business and recreation, and to ensure economic stability for the heart of El Dorado through concentrated efforts of design, promotion, organization, and economic vitalization. And we put this picture up here because it incorporates the results of all of those things. You can see the new Great Beginnings Building behind W Investments Building. We now have the McAdoo Studio, which is where Duttons-Cuttens used to be. The vacant lot is now filled in with Edward Jones, a new Edward Jones Building. There are residents now above the buildings as we're going west and you get to ICI and so on. But that's an example of the kind of work that Main Street's been involved in and the results that we get downtown. Many people don't know exactly where the downtown district is, where the boundaries of it are, and that it unfolds our downtown historic district. So I wanted to include this just for a quick review. Main Street's sole focus is the downtown district, the heart of the community, and what affects the downtown affects the whole community. And so it is our concentration is this district. And you can see that the Civic Center, which is on the agenda for tonight, is in the bounds of the district. It is not in the bounds of the historic district, but it is in the bounds of the downtown district. Interestingly enough, the courthouse, for example, is in the downtown district, but it isn't in the historic district. Why, we wonder? It had to do with the original survey that was done to establish the historic district, and we did not need it for the ratio of contributing to non-contributing buildings. So, and it already had its own designation. So it's definitely in the downtown district, but those are just two examples of boundary issues and questions and so on. This project has had widespread public input, beginning with a steering committee, and I'm going to read these names because I want to give everybody credit for initiating the survey that is the primary piece of public input that we derived all of this plan from. So our steering committee chairman is Jeff Christensen, who is the president of the Main Street Board. Committee members include David Burnley, Christina Har, Stephanie Dean, Nathan and Nicole Enslinger, Samuel McVeigh, Tyler Norris, Leon Leachman, and Steve Waite. As I s-- can I just roll it instead of clicking?
Sure.
Oh, great. So we sent out a survey to all the stakeholders. That was property owners and business owners in the downtown. We got almost 199 business leaders and property owners and residents downtown. Some of them who are more than one of these categories replied. And we compiled the-- that survey into four chapters that are about the context of how we got where we are now, the first four chapters of this document, followed by chapters 5 through 11 that discuss areas of concern and recommendations for the downtown district. And it's that, as I'm going to repeat, how we get from good to great. And chapter 12 summarizes all the recommendations, suggests implement and implementation process and funding mechanisms to be considered. The purpose of the plan is to clarify a unified vision and inspire action, the kind of action that results in this series of photographs. It's hard to believe, but that's the same building. This is the Great Beginnings Building. Have you noticed the new sign on Great Beginnings? It really looks terrific. And that's designed by Tyler Norris. This building with the facade, the green aluminum facade, was not contributing. And then by removing that and exposing and restoring the historic elements, it now is considered a contributing building. So the next steps, we are asking the commission to consider recommending that the zoning and planning commission are the next group that will review this plan and make suggestions for changes and working with staff and so on to continue our collaboration. We are currently, and I can say that as soon as I give David you the printed worksheets, which I have with me for tonight, reviewing worksheet number one, which is a quick overview of all of the recommendations that are summarized in chapter 12. We hope to develop priorities, a timeline, and funding strategies. What's nice about that list of recommendations is that in the last two years, the city has initiated and is working on a number of the recommendations that were from the public input. So it's a really nice confirmation, I think. So I'm here to say that the Master Plan Project is now on our website. Anyone can go and look at it in the appendix. So we invite you to do so. We're totally open to additional input or suggestions. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Emily. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Any questions from any of you all?
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
And that's all we have for personal appearance. We'll move on to public comments. Persons who wish to address the city commission regarding items that are not on the agenda but are under the jurisdiction of the city commission may do so when called upon. Comments on personnel matters and matters pending in court are not permitted. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Any presentations for information purposes only, and no action will be taken. Do we have anyone here who would like to make public comment? Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. On tonight's consent agenda, we're considering the approval of city commission meeting minutes for February 20th, 2023, and special city commission meeting minutes from March 1st, 2023. And we're also considering the appropriation ordinance number 02-23 and the amount of $1,455,530.89. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 5-0. There's nothing on old business, so we're going to move right into new business. Agenda item number 10 is the Civic Center appraisal.
Second question, we have Chris Kaufman from Martin's Appraisal to provide an overview of the results of the commercial appraisal that was conducted on the Civic Center. You will have provided a copy of, so he'll provide an overview. And then, of course, if we have any questions, he will be brought into it as well. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Kaufman.
Mayor Commissioners, good evening. It was a pleasure to take this on, though I must say this was a challenging assignment. I'm very grateful for Mr. Meyer and his time. He met me out there at the Civic Center and took me through the building and made sure I knew what all was going on with it. And anytime an appraisal of a building like this is undertaken, I generally recommend, and Mr. Dilner agreed, that a range of market values should probably be explored because there's no such thing as a comparable to a building like that. When buildings like that are built, buildings, governmental buildings, it doesn't matter what level of government builds them. They do not build buildings. They build monuments. That's a universal truth everywhere at all levels of government, and such buildings do not sell on the open market very often. So I'm forced to take a look at sales of buildings of similar functional utility. To what other uses could that Civic Center building be put and select comparables accordingly? That's the general approach I took. After Mr. Meyer took me through the building, even though Mr. Dilner and I had discussed a sales approach only as far as valuation approaches, I really thought it would be a good idea to also do a cost analysis on it to try to reinforce the top end of the market because it is an extremely well-built building that has been immaculately maintained by the city. So I just felt a whole lot better also doing a cost analysis to help set the top of the market on it. The numbers the council may be most interested in are going to be found on page 1-2 of the report. It indicates that I did not do an income approach. It used to be that I could do income approaches on governmental buildings because the Kansas Department of Revenue used to publish lease rates of all buildings occupied by state agencies all over the state, and they don't do that anymore. So I do not have the data to do an income analysis on this anymore, on this type of a facility anymore. But in brief, the bottom of the market, if the council were to see fit to convey the Civic Center to another community-oriented or not-for-profit organization that would put the building to a similar public use, and there would be community contribution considerations, then you could probably take as little as about $47, $48 per square foot for it. That would be supported by the market range. However, when an appraiser looks at any assignment, we assume arms-length transaction, willing buyer, willing participant, normal market motivations. So the bottom of the market, I thought, was more like probably $60 to $62 per square foot. And if you multiply that by the 20,000, 242 square feet, according to Butler County's measurements, that's where you come up with the, with the $1,250,000.
Minimum supported.
I'm sorry?
That was that minimum supported market value?
That was the minimum supported market value. Yes, sir. And that, again, assumes arms-length transaction, no atypical market motivations at all. Again, if the council were to see fit to convey it to a not-for-profit or a community-based organization, you would have cover to go less than $62 a square foot if you felt it was appropriate to do so.
You said around 42 to 45, is that?
Yeah, if you'll take a look at page six.
I'm getting ahead of you, sorry.
No, that's quite all right. If you'll take a look at page 6-3, 6-4, I believe it is in the report. Yes, 6-4. Take a look at the unit of comparison section and the second paragraph, following all the adjustments I had to make to the, to the various comparable sales that I've selected. You could go as low as about $47 per square foot. I really felt like it was probably closer to 60, 62 if it were just a normal market transaction. So that's how I came up with the $1,250,000.
Gotcha.
If you go just slightly above the average of the market range, I came in at $95 per square foot, and that's where the $1,923,000 most probable market value came from. If you'll take a look at the comparable sales map and the grid on pages 6-2, 6-3, after Mr. Meyer took me through the building, it seemed to me that the most readily adaptable use for it is office space. So I looked for Class A, really top-of-the-line office comparables throughout this south-central part of Kansas to see which comparables I could find and confirm the information on. So that's why those numbers are coming out the way that they are. The, it's probably going to be most time advantageous for you folks to jump to page 8-3, I believe it is. Let me flip there real quick. Yeah, 8-2, pardon me. That's where I explain the conclusions to value, the minimum support of market value. And that's, that's where I explain how I came up with the numbers that I did. That $62 per square foot times the 20,242 square feet, that's where that $1,250,000 comes from. The most probable, if you were to just convey it in an open market to a for-profit private enterprise of some sort, I think you could reasonably expect $1,950,000 out of it. I think, given the quality of the construction, that is an entirely supportable number. If you were to shoot for the moon, shoot for the absolute top end, the very top end of the sales indicates a value of about $170,000 per square foot. Multiply that by the 20,242 square feet and compare that to the cost analysis that I did in section seven of the report, and that's where that $3,445,000 comes from. Rather than get into the vagaries and the details of appraising real estate that I'm doubtful anybody too terribly cares about, I'm happy to respond to any questions or comments.
So one of the things I noticed is the, the land value alone, you were saying, was probably about $305,000?
Yes, and I would be careful in interpreting that because, as I said in section seven of the report, finding land tracts that size in El Dorado proper that have sold, I couldn't do it.
Well, I did find a notation on the Old Fett Motors where Orshman went, that evidently that property, according to the listing, went for $300,000, $750,000 bucks. The lots they had out there, they bought. That's what it showed on the comparisons, which was even higher.
Yeah, and the fact that that is right along Central Avenue, I do believe.
Yeah.
And out fairly close to the Turnpike where.
Yes, sir.
Things are moving and shaking and.
Yeah.
Yeah, and there's lots more traffic exposure. That's, that's why that dollar value per square foot, there was also considerations of assemblage on that. They had to buy multiple lots and then assemble them all together. There are some extra costs involved in something like that that you have to consider back then.
So did that include the demolition of the building also, probably?
Possibly. I would have to look at the actual sale validation questionnaire and talk to the.
That's okay.
Butler County Appraiser's Office to be sure about that.
That's probably more information than we need, but thank you.
Ideally, yes. It should be a pure land value, but it's, that's an assumption is the mother of all fallops in the appraisal world.
Okay.
You included the rental side, too?
I included it in the gross building area and included it in the valuation. I did not analyze the lease for it. Mr. Meyer did indicate to me that it was there and it was being leased. If, whatever that lease is, the problem is if you try to extrapolate that to the rest of the footprint of the building, you get a mismatch because as the square footage that is occupied increases, the price per square foot on the lease rates tend to decrease. So it's not always an apples-to-apples comparison.
So when you talk about the highest and best use was as vacant, does that mean just what it sounds like? Nobody there and you're selling it?
That's something that I'm required to do by the Uniform Standards of Professional Appraisal Practice. If it were just bare dirt there, what would bring the highest value to the land?
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
And happily, and it's a good thing when these things happen, the highest and best use as improved matches quite nicely with the highest and best use as vacant.
Okay.
The only thing to be a little bit cautious about is that that's a rather large site with a really, really impressive amount of parking around it. And if somebody were just trying to meet zoning requirements, they would not require so much parking probably and would probably not be willing to buy that much land. That's why you find so many lot splits and carve-outs and things like that.
So as we look at the page 6-3 and we look at the comparables, that's, to your point, that was the challenge, was kind of trying to figure out.
I had the same challenge when I appraised the Century Center for the city of Oberlin in the northwestern part of the state. That one was even more challenging because there were a lot of mixed uses in that one and it was a two-level structure. Yes, you have to look for buildings of similar functional utility. There's, I would have to look nationwide to try to find buildings of government buildings that have sold. And chances are, when I did, they would be so old and so rundown that it wouldn't be a fair comparison. And given how well that building was built and how well the city has taken care of it over the years and how recently major systems renovations and improvements have happened, Mr. Meyer was talking to me about the parking lot expansion and the resurfacing of the whole thing, just 2022, I believe he told me, as well as some fairly recent HVAC upgrades and things like that. Yeah, I didn't feel right comparing it to super-old, dilapidated buildings that were in such bad shape, even the federal government wasn't interested in them anymore. So yes, to your point, that's why I selected the office comparable sales that I did. I tried to look for sales that were similar in size, buildings that were similar in size, and I tried to look for buildings of similar construction. Several years ago, I did a study with Professor Stan Longhoffer at Wichita State University when he and I did a fairly massive study, the largest of its kind, I believe, looking at what kinds of factors influence sale prices of commercial real estate. And one thing we found for office properties is that the type of construction is very significant. So I tried to limit my search to masonry office buildings.
Sounds like you're telling us that the best use for this building is to keep it within the city, as a city building.
That is not for me to say, sir. I was asked to bracket the market if the commission were to choose to convey it. I will offer the observation that just based upon if somebody were going to build that building new, it would cost well over $5 million to do it, and nobody would do that because they could never get that value back out of the market.
Kendra, do you have any questions?
I'm good.
Kelly?
I mean, I just look at the comparables and, I mean, we go from $200 a square foot down to $44 a square foot. So, I mean, I understand you have to do what you have to do to get to these numbers. I just, it's hard for me to just wrap my head around it, to be honest.
Looks like a monkey with a shotgun gun.
Well, I mean, I understand how it works and how you came up to your numbers. I just, I'm not sure that we would realistically ever get that, even the middle number, because you said that nobody would build it at 5 million, and I just don't know. I mean, I get we have to come up with a number. I just, man, that's a lot for what it is. And maybe I'm missing it, but I understand you have, you have how you get it and there's, that's what you do for a living. I just, our range is pretty broad, and not that we don't want to compare ourselves to Andover, but land in Andover is not comparable to land on where we're at here. And so that's, you know, those, the top two numbers, those are pretty, that's a lot. That's, it's just, it's hard for me because of the range to know where it really would fall, you know?
Yeah, and that's, that's why I put the most proper-supported price in there for exactly that reason. This is, if I were appraising it for a bank, that is the number because they won't allow me to tell them, here's the range. I have to give them a number. If I had to give somebody a number, 1,950 is the number I would give them. There are a fair few reasons for that, a couple of which we haven't talked about yet. One, there is a pretty substantial amount of storage mezzanine that is concrete floor above part of the office space, and it is served by a dumb waiter that is rated for freight. That is, that's almost super adequacy. If you found somebody who absolutely had to have that feature and they were the perfect buyer, they would be willing to pay a premium for it, but the standard market buyer, maybe not. The things that are more important to an office user, especially somebody who was interested in carving it out a bit and leasing it to multiple office users, is the fact it has Cat 5 Ethernet wiring throughout it. I specifically asked Mr. Meyer about that, and pretty robust Ethernet with multiple repeaters. And to an office user, those two things are a big
Did the, excuse me, did the college sell that building there in Andover? The one that was at 21st and Andover Road?
They didn't.
They didn't or did?
They did.
Yeah, see, that would be the most I'd think would be comparable.
Well, I mean, I understand what you're saying. I just, you're talking about the corner of 21st and Andover Road and the fastest-growing spot in the state of Kansas right now.
Location is an issue, the condition that it was in, and the land-to-building ratio were all things that I considered.
Yeah.
But yes, I did key in on that and I decided to go ahead and include it in my deliberations just for the fact of what it is. Because that was one of my thoughts in analyzing the highest and best use. Could in some sort of an educational institution, like some sort of a trade school to train computer technicians or something like that, find value in this building? So I latched onto that sale and decided to include it with Andover, even though, you're right, that's, the location is probably not comparable for exactly that, but I did consider it for exactly that reason.
And I just, again, I understand the challenges that you have in finding the comparables in this situation. I mean, as we look through the list, you know, we, yeah, I mean, location. Demand of location is what is kind of the challenge that we've talked about prior, right? So, you know, it's not the same as 21st and Andover Road or 37th and Rock or...
Well, the other sale that I considered was a very similar-sized masonry office building that is of comparable age condition on the north end of Wichita, and I rejected it because it sold with the Social Security Administration lease in place. And that one sold for well over $300 a square foot. I rejected that one for just the reasons you described. I share your shock at how expensive real estate is.
Yeah, I just, I'm not, I'm not sure that we would ever sell it for that. I hope we would, and if we could, especially the 3.4 million dollar number, we'd list it tonight. Like, I mean, if you could get that for it, I don't know how you would say no to that, but I just, I don't know how realistic that is, you know? And I understand you have to have comparables. I wouldn't ever say get that.
You may consider reaching out to some commercial real estate brokers and people who have national, nationwide pipelines of people who are constantly on the prowl, institutional investors, real estate investment trusts, people like that, and see what they think. They might tell you that a building like this with the demographics it has could sell very quickly, or they might not. I won't presume to speak for them.
As I read through this this afternoon, I have to admit, I had to go back and reread some of it to understand, but I eventually got into the flow of things. I don't know that I'm surprised at the numbers that you came up with after reading through. I had to go back to my college real estate classes to pull some of this out. The highest number, I agree with Kelly, that seems pretty high, but like you said, if you were doing it for a bank, that would be the number that the bank would want.
The bank, and this is a matter of federal regulation, would require me to give them an opinion of value. And if I were doing this for a bank, I would have told them the property is worth 1,950, as it existed on January 26 when Mr. Meyer and I were out there looking.
Do you all have any additional questions or comments? I appreciate the work that you've done to put this together for us. You know, I think the big conversation in the long term for the commission is, as we all understand, whether it's commercial or residential, there's an appraised value, which is your job to put together, and then there's what's the property worth or what's somebody going to pay for it. You know, there's a lot to, a lot for us to consider as well. I think at this time, as far as this particular action item goes, new business, a new business, it's just up to the commission to accept the appraisal. Thank you. So, I mean, I would send a motion to accept the appraisal.
I move to accept the appraisal of the Civic Center completed by Martin's appraisal.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Next item on the agenda is to refer the Downtown Master Plan to the Planning Commission.
City Commission, as you note, Elder Mainstreet has prepared the Downtown Master Plan. Emily presented that earlier today, and then we've also had some other conversations about it in work sessions as well. So at this point in time, staff is recommending that you refer the master plan as prepared by Mainstreet to the Planning Commission for review. And the primary item that we're reviewing for is compatibility with the counterparts of the plan. So this is just a formal way of starting that process and getting that review started.
You ready for a motion?
Aye, I'm ready for a motion.
I move to refer the Downtown Master Plan as prepared by El Dorado Mainstreet to the Planning Commission.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
If opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We have an agenda item to refer temporary and off-site signage regulations from Article A of the zoning regulations to the Planning Commission.
In much the same manner, the City Commission has received some comments from the public regarding signage discussed at a previous work session, and the commission wanted to have the Planning Commission look at temporary and small-site signage regulations. So we are asking you to formally review or recommend, I'm sorry, formally refer that to the Planning Commission, and so this will be a formal action to take that to the Planning Commission so they will evaluate of the zoning regulations pertaining to temporary and off-site signage regulations.
Do I have a motion?
I move to refer temporary and off-site signage regulations as defined by Article 8 of the zoning regulations to the Planning Commission.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
If opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is sales tax committee appointments.
City Commission, as you know, we have the, every five years, the city has to appoint a sales tax committee to look at or to prepare a recommendation for a ballot question for the voters to consider. And this is specifically for the one-cent sales tax that residents have supported overwhelmingly since its original inception in the late 1990s. The sales tax comes up for renewal every five years, and the city's process is to appoint a sales tax committee or a sales tax task force, as it has been called. And the primary purpose of that committee is to prepare a recommendation for a ballot question for the City Commission to then take action on. The way this process will come to fruition is that the committee will provide a recommendation for a ballot question for you all to consider by the July 17 meeting, as that is the drop-dead date for the November general election. They can do it before that, but that will be the last regular meeting that you all can take action to get it on the November ballot. And once that's done, you guys will take action on a recommendation, whether that looks like either before or after the meeting. Provided it's done by July 17, then the ballot question will be on the November general election ballot for voters in El Dorado to consider either renewing or blockfiling the existing one-cent sales tax. As you know, the current one-cent sales tax is allocated with $1.65 million to corporate tax reduction, $600,000 to street maintenance, $100,000 to economic development, and then any amount that is in excess of $2.35 million goes to the excess sales tax committee for a recommendation on allocation to the City Commission. So right now, the City Commission has discussed the following individuals: Bill Rinkelmaugh, Matt Jacobs, Jordan Buxton, John Steinbacher, David Sundgren, Craig Hamilton, and Brett Reimsberg to serve that committee. And in addition to that, we've also received applications from Lori Gioso, Ross Stumpf, and Edward Wilson to serve the committee. The committee does not have a set number of people to serve on, so it's kind of at the commission's discretion in terms of the number to serve. So once the committee is appointed, we will then begin the work of the committee to prepare that recommendation for you all to consider.
So in the motion that you need, we're to include all the names?
Yes.
Okay.
If there's anyone that you all have talked to between now and our last meeting If there's anyone that you all have talked to between now and our last meeting that's not listed, or you'd like to change up the listing, then yes, we can.
So you include like that Ross Stumpf and Edward Wilson?
Yeah.
I thought we wanted to keep it a small group, not a large group.
With all the names, that's ten.
That's ten, yeah, I don't think, that's a, do we want an odd number?
No.
Well, we could go to the seven that are originally.
Ten.
I'm fine with it how it is, but you guys, we want it to go with a smaller group, so that's up to you all.
I mean, they're, they're going to have some significant work to do, and so I think it's, and, and the challenge, the larger the group gets, the more discombobulated things get, and it's more difficult to pass stuff, but, I mean, like, at this point, I would take a motion from somebody, and we can discuss those individuals in the motion after, after the motion, if somebody wants to make a motion.
Well, before a motion, I just would like to say, I don't have a problem with ten, as long as it, it wouldn't grow from there, right? There can't be any more people appointed. Once we.
That would be a key one.
Well, okay, but I mean, so, if somebody has shown a valid interest in it and would like to be involved with it, shouldn't you turn it down?
I'm not, I'm not opposed.
So here you go. I move that Bill Rinkelbaugh, Matt Jacobs, Jordan Buxton, John Steinbacher, David Sundgren, Craig Hamilton, Grant Rensberg, Lori, is it Giassi?
I'm Giasso.
Gioso, Ross Stumpf, and Edward Wilson be appointed to serve on the committee. Should that be, what's official name of them? Oh, okay, hold on, one sec. Sales tax committee to prepare a recommendation for a ballot question concerning a one cent sales tax for consideration by voters during the November general election.
Second.
Motion and a second. It's time for discussion, if anyone has any concerns about any of those ten, or we would need to make adjustments, or new motions, is there any questions, comments?
I think this is a good bunch of people.
I mean, my only concern is we have an even number, so they could be tied on both.
We'll get to break the tie, so.
Which, yeah, which you would have eight, twelve, doesn't really matter, so.
If, if someone came forward, say, Wednesday afternoon, decided they really wanted to sort of, would we consider another person or two, or once we set this, that's it?
I mean, I, I, from my perspective, I think everything is discussable amongst this, amongst this commission, we can, but I wouldn't, personally, I wouldn't go into this assuming we're going to keep adding to it, but if, if something comes up and we want to discuss it as a commission.
Okay, so if something comes up.
I think that we discuss it, but I also am.
It could arise that somebody will get sick, you know, then we might need to replace them, and say, well, then I would be, no.
Sure. Any further discussion?
I'm fine with it how it is.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
If opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We don't have any discussion items, but I was, I had a question today, and if I could, so we've now received, you know, so as we look through the process of what's kind of the genesis of this conversation around the Civic Center, and then, you know, we asked you to, to move forward with the process and get the appraisal, and we've received that tonight, kind of what are the next steps? There needs to be some conversation amongst, in a work session right here, amongst this group, about what the potential looks like moving forward.
Yeah, I thought we would have that conversation beginning Wednesday in the work session, after you had time to consider the appraisal and the information that was presented tonight.
Yeah, so.
Or we can reschedule.
Yeah, we're not, I don't, I don't think we'll have three people here at the work session Wednesday, spring break and a turnaround. So, I mean, I think that, I, I think that I, you know, I heard some concerns about comparables and about the reality of getting, you know, two or three million dollars out of it. I think that there's, it warrants a bigger conversation amongst this group as to what we do.
I guess one thing I'd like to know is, is how does that fit into our, our, our comprehensive plan? Like, what is the future use of that building? Is it going to stay as it is? I mean, it, that, that's the type of stuff that I'd, I'd like to discuss. I mean, because if it's just going to be what it is now, I mean, is, is there any bigger plan for it? I mean, do we, do we want to get back into wedding business, or, I mean, what's the, the ultimate goal for that, that building? To be rented twenty-five times a year, and that's just what we're going to do, and, you know, that's, that's the type of stuff I'd like to know. And is there anything in the, in the Main Street master plan, since it's in the Main Street, that would have any use for that? I mean, I guess I'm just curious of, is it just, the plan is for it to be what it is? And then, you know?
So, first of all, let me answer the first question. It sounds like most of you will be out in the next week.
Yes.
So, well, I don't know, it sounds like you enjoy it.
Three of us will be gone.
So, what I would recommend on this matter is that, not the next work session, but the following one, whichever day that is, so that'll be in April, I believe. So, I'd watch me March twenty-ninth, we can have, we can have a conversation, and in that meeting, we can have, kind of do an overview of the questions that you mentioned there, as well as just discuss generally kind of what process might look like, or a couple of options before that, moving forward. So that'll give us some time to develop that and kind of answer some of those questions that Commissioner Tetra could devote, and go from there.
I don't want to rush on the seller.
I think it's, yeah, I mean, I think it's great, we need, we need to continue the conversation. So, I, I think I would just tell the commission, if you guys have some specific data requests between now and then, I would send those on to David so that, so the staff can bring that stuff to, to the work session. If you've got data requests, just email David directly. So, conversation continues.
I was kind of told something, and, and I'll pass it on to you guys, is what the people are thinking of El Dorado is be a solution and not the problem, and that's what you're hearing out there right now about the Civic Center. They said be a solution, not a problem. So, that's kind of the talk out there. And that's when, when I was told this, it kind of, kind of shocked me to be told that. And I said, well, we're not going to, we're not planning on moving on it very, very quick. We're going to take some time with it.
I guess I don't, I don't know what that means, and, I mean, it, it is what it is, I suppose, but I think we've actually moved pretty slow, to be honest, and we've never even talked about, like, yes, we're going to sell it at this minute, we're kind of just in the data collection phase, which I think is prudent in this, this situation. I mean, I think that we haven't rushed through anything, I mean, maybe we have, but, I mean, this has been several months, and we haven't really even said, yes, we're going to do one thing or another, we're just evaluating what we have, so I guess I'm not sure what the solution for that problem discussion thing is, but, because I, I guess I haven't heard that from anybody that I've talked to.
I heard it two days ago. Okay, so we, at any time, are we going to have public input? Let the public tell us what they want?
So, on the twentieth, well, I will add a couple of their processes, but either day, the opportunity to add public comment is going to be up to you all. If you guys tell us we need to have public comment, then we'll have public comment, if you say that we're not going to sell it, then we won't sell it, I mean, so we'll provide, we'll provide some options in terms of what our process could look like, but ultimately it'll be up to you to figure out, to decide what we're going to do in terms of the process, or what the next steps are.
Yeah, man, I don't think that any conversation or public comment has been restricted up to this point, and I know that we've received, as a commission, and the city's received numerous emails and comments in public and so forth, but, yeah, I mean, if we, as we move through the process, the options that, that we discuss, and what the decisions that we make, then we'll, you know, have those opportunities to, to set that process, so. City Commission Advisory Board, I'm sorry.
I remembered. El Dorado Main Street met last Tuesday. One of the things they did was review and approve the annual budget. They're still thinking of it as a draft budget. They have put in their expected expenses, and they are looking at possibly doing some additional fundraisers throughout the year. The suggestion of a golf tournament, a softball tournament, an adult after-hours trick-or-treat, which sounded rather interesting, a beer garden with food courts, so they are still brainstorming ideas for fundraising along with those that they are already doing. They're still going to have the garden tour, and the master gardener are going to be involved, and they will do the Christmas house tour. They're, of course, raising money from supporters, from grants and foundations, as well as the monies received from the city. They are also Sunshine Alley, you know Sunshine Alley? Sunshine Alley is being taken over by the master gardeners. They want to spiff it up and make it pretty again, and so they will be taking care of it through the spring and summer and fall. They also presented a market profile and snapshot that we quickly went through, it's a marketing study, basically on the city of El Dorado, interesting profile, if anybody wants to read it, you're welcome to it. One of the things they came up with at work session, we got these little pylons, well, at the last Main Street meeting, this is a new sign they want to come up with, that anytime there is construction happening in downtown El Dorado that is in association with Main Street, it's kind of like, you know, your sales tax dollars at work, then this would show, you know, some of the remodeling and projects that are going on with the help of Main Street, which I think is a pretty neat idea. Otherwise, they will have their downtown assembly next Tuesday, March fourteenth, at Charlie's.
Thank you.
Experience El Dorado is meeting next week at spring break, which I will be in Colorado. Do you have anything you want to add on that? I know that he's concerned that he has a quorum there for some of his ideas to have.
We, we are, we do require a quorum next week in order to vote on the neural options so that we can move forward, we are on a timeline there with the grants, so, I, he has not told me we do not have a quorum yet, so.
Okay.
Hopefully we'll be okay.
Very active.
Good, a lot of stuff going on.
Okay, for El Dorado Week, David has talked to Sarah, and every three months, she's going to come in here and talk to, talk to the commission about what's going on with, with El Dorado Week, so you're not left in the dark. And as far as the K two fifty-four, are you going to talk about it today?
Go ahead.
Oh, I, I was sick that day.
No, it's all right, yeah, I can, thank you.
Yeah, David's going to talk about that, yeah.
The library has extra children's programming during spring break next week, and they have an adult gardening class, March fourteenth.
And the FABC did not have a quorum last week, so we're rescheduling that meeting. Hopefully they don't try to do it next week.
Yeah.
City managers reported.
All right, well, we are closely monitoring Senate Bill two hundred and forty-eight. This bill would provide a local exemption, I'm sorry, a sales tax exemption on the local portion of sales tax. We conservatively estimate that this could cost the city a minimum of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year if it goes through. So, just to be clear, this was a bill that started out as a exemption, sales tax exemption on health foods, and then kind of expanded, and then expanded, and then it was amended to include all local sales tax on food, period, which would be a lot of sales at Dylan's, some of the sales at Walmart, and so it's, it's difficult, in some cases, to estimate the full cost, because we don't know how much of Walmart's sales are food-related, we also don't, didn't count, like, gas stations and other stores that do sell food, but that may be a smaller portion of their retail sales. But we do estimate that the minimum is going to be about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year, this bill has passed. It has been, it was adopted by the Senate, because of the House, it was kind of adopted, it was adopted in an emergency vote, so we didn't have a chance to, we didn't even know what was happening, so it was too late. So, we'll, we'll closely monitor that as I move forward. Speaking of sales tax.
So, I've got a question about that. So, it was adopted in the Senate, which would take away our one cent sales tax on the food in El Dorado, and our, our Senate representative, Senator Fag, voted?
For.
For, to, to, okay, just wanted to clarify that.
Speaking of sales tax, sales tax is starting out very strong for the year. We brought in three hundred and seven, a little over, a little under three hundred and seventy thousand dollars, but when you add up year-to-date, we are about seventeen percent higher than last year.
Wow.
Which was a, so, some of that is obviously attributed to higher costs, at point of sale due to inflation, but nonetheless, we're trending pretty high compared to last year. And let's see, we are talking about the March fifteenth work session, so I think that's, I think that's all I have for now.
So when is the legislative session over?
The legislative session is supposed to be over ninety days after it starts, which doesn't give you a very good date, but I believe that it's the end of May, I'm sorry, the end of April. However, the session has been extended in the past, so it just depends on how they're coming to budget and things like that. Generally, it's right at the end of April, they're trying to get it wrapped up.
So has the House set a date on when to vote on the sales tax?
My understanding is they have not yet.
So possibly, when the chamber has their breakfast with our legislators, it might still be an open question?
Very well given.
Good.
Now, the other point that I'll bring up on that, I, the, the sales tax discussion came up, because the, the original intent was to accelerate the tax, the sales tax sunset, which was the state rate. So, that was, that current legislation is set to sunset it over a number of years, the folks in speak wanted to accelerate that, and then as that bill got opened up, that's when they started getting the health foods, and then another thing, and another thing, and now before you know it, somebody snuck in a local option, sales tax exemption, so that's what happened. However, at this point, I don't believe the House has scheduled that debate, although that's not to say that we will be notified when they do.
So we still have time to call Mr. Carpenter and tell him our opinion on that?
Yes.
Is there any advice at this point from the league about the approach from Kansas municipalities and losing that ability of self-government?
So they, they provided, they're obviously advising cities to contact their state representatives and communicate the effect or the impact, the potential that to your community if the legislation goes through. So in our case, obviously communicating the fact that a minimum is three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I mean, kind of, what does that mean, what do we do with three hundred and thirty thousand dollars, what would that look like from that standpoint? So I can definitely get some bullet points put together, so you guys, if you want to contact Representative Carpenter, you may do so, so we'll get that for you.
How many mills is that? Three hundred and fifty thousand?
So, that's approximately three and a half mills.
That we'll lose. On that K two fifty-four.
Yes.
David put it in our packet on Friday, what they were talking about, so.
Yeah, so, as I remember to provide that, so, there's a company in Wichita called Integra Technologies, who made an announcement last week, I believe, for a one point eight billion dollar expansion. They are actually, they're in the semiconductor food chain, and, I mean, a lot of people didn't even know they existed in Wichita. It's an employee company that's been around for a bit of forty years, and they are going to be applying for CHIPS Act funding, and so they're trying to make a big deal about this project, which of course it is a big deal, but they're trying to get support, and, so they were at the K two fifty-four Corridor Association meeting last week, and they, their plant location, or their, their building location would be between Rock Road and Webb, right there on the two fifty-four, right in front of that magnet school, that's right there. on the 254, right in front of that magnet school, that's right there. So it would be a pretty significant opportunity for the region because the expansion, if they're allocated CHIPS Act funding, they would create about 2,000 jobs, and all of those jobs would be, those employees would come from throughout the region. So it would be located in Bel Air, but it's not to say that Eldorado would not benefit. We'd obviously have some people that would live here. But then, in addition to the Integra Technologies expansion, they would also, if they receive the Apex funding, which is a state incentive program that the state approved, they would also have to bring five suppliers with them. And there's no requirement that those incentives, that those suppliers have to be located in the same community as the Apex company. So those could be located anywhere throughout the region, presumably located in close proximity, however, to the mother company, if you will. So it's possible that we could benefit also on that side of the equation as well. So a lot of, a lot of people are very interested in this, obviously, from a number of different things, but that's one thing that we're probably going to be ramping up a conversation on is the potential impact. In fact, Andrew Neve from the Greater Wichita Partnership has agreed to come talk to the commission about the project, its potential impact at the May 10 work session. So you'll get more information about that as well. So potentially something real big. The, one more thing I'll say about this is the CHIPS Act funding is, I think it's $53 billion. So it sounds like a big number, but when you're talking about semiconductors, it's actually a very small number. So the question was asked, well, what is the possibility that this company will get any of the funding? And while I can't speak to the probability of the company getting any federal funding, it's important to note that Integra, so you might think of the semiconductors as Intel, AMD, and Micron, and there's other big companies that you might be aware of if I named. Those companies compete against each other, but all of those companies work with Integra. So they kind of have a niche. They're the only company in the United States that does what they do. So if you want to reshore semiconductors, you're going to have to have Integra Technologies there helping you what they do. So it's amazing what this company does. And there's a lot of support, not only at the state level, but also at the local level, the county level, and so there's a lot of money that's going to be put towards this project if they're able to get some of this better funding. So we'll have more conversation on that in the future.
It's good news.
Thank you.
Thanks, David.
Yeah, absolutely.
As we don't have an executive session tonight, I consider a motion to adjourn.
I move the way adjourn.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Thanks, everybody.